February 17th, 2021 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. We are streaming this morning's meeting live on KPTS Channel 8. We're also on the county's Facebook page, YouTube channel, and we're also on our website, sedwickcounty.org. Commissioners again have plexiglass barriers between them. Staff are socially distanced here in the room. We have our masks and then we're also going to use video chat and regular phone calls or conference call lines in order to conduct today's business. I just wanted to let everyone know we've got, well, obviously, we all know that it's super, super cold outside and we even had some expected rolling blackouts or expected rolling outages in our community both Monday and yesterday, but the cold is not yet done. So our partners at Evergy have provided some, some great advice for us to take some steps in order to keep our electric usage low and help the, the energy grid. So please make sure to turn your thermostats down a little bit cooler, close your blinds, keep all of the, the energy and the warm air inside of your homes, make sure you have clean furnace filters, and also make sure to turn off any unnecessary lights or appliances in your home. It's very important for us to maintain this energy supply so that way we're able to ensure that everyone in our community can have the electricity that they need. We also know that it's very important in order to be safe with, with going out in this weather. So be sure to layer up. You can follow us on Sedgwick County's social media pages for more information, but definitely be sure to keep yourself and your loved ones safe in this cold temperature. During yesterday's commission meeting, we had a, a number of different topics to, that were discussed, but primarily it was about the COVID-19 vaccines. You can watch the full video on the, on our Facebook page, YouTube channel, or on, on our website. We learned that the COVID vaccine might be a little bit delayed this week due to weather across the nation. We also were reminded that we are only vaccinating residents age 70 and older and any other healthcare workers. This is due to that short vaccine supply. We know that dose two appointments for anyone in the 90 and above or even the 80 and above category is up for their dose two potentially, so make sure that you get your second dose scheduled and you do get that second dose so that you are fully vaccinated. And if you would like to schedule an appointment or check for appointment availability, we have that available by dialing 660-1029, or you can go on our website, sedwickcounty.org to schedule your appointment. And if you do have an appointment, it's very important that you show up on time or no more than 15 minutes early in order to make sure that everyone has a safe spot in the arena so that we're all socially distanced. And then also as of our last report, the Sedgwick County Health Department has provided over 31,000 doses of the COVID vaccine to our residents. So very encouraging to see that number increase, but we still have a ways to go. We also know that, I'll change it over to the agenda this morning, we have a number of board appointments. We'll review the COVID-19 community survey results with Dr. Elizabeth Abla from KU Med. We have the county appraiser here to present the annual report of real property values. There's a zone change in District 5. Our CFO will provide an update on the CARES Act and COVID-19 spending. You'll review a report from the bid board, and then I believe there is an executive session at the end of this meeting. So with that, Chairman, I will hand the meeting to you.
Thank you, Kate. Before we call the meeting to order, to follow up from the cold this morning before 8 o'clock, received a message from Evergy that they did not do any load reductions throughout last night and currently none this morning, but it's depending on this Southwest Power Supply or SPP, they have not heard anything yet as of this morning to do any load reductions. So as of now, no load reductions happened over the night and none planned except again, Evergy's under the rules of this 17-state SPP that calls the shots. So for residents wondering, it changes hourly pretty much, but as soon, as we get the information, we will reveal it and post it and share it and they're doing, Evergy's doing a nice job of trying to communicate. So with that, I'll call the meeting to, of the Wednesday, February 17th, Board of County, Sedgwick County Commissioner meeting to order. Also note that we have two commissioners that are zoomed in from home, Commissioner Cruz and Commissioner Lopez, so we will work through that as we've done before. And, and welcome, thanks for joining us and hope you both are feeling okay. So that's where we're at. So I'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
And vacation. To be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag still.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we received a, a number of emails from the public agenda. In, in reviewing those, I'd like to ask if our Communication Department can help respond to some of them. There was a lot of, to me, it looked like there was some misinformation and some questions in there, so that would be my comment on, on those that we received by email. I don't think we have anybody signed up to speak, to address us publicly, so any other comments about the emails we received? Okay, I don't see any, so I'll make a motion that we receive and file the public agenda, public comments. Been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item A, accept the resignation of Kathy Bond from the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papun, County Counselor, if it please the commission, we can take items A and B together because they both involve resignation by board members from former County Commissioner Michael O'Donnell. And now, the appointments for Commissioner Lopez. The first, item A, is the resignation of Kathy Bond from the Mental Health Advisory Board. She has, she's doing that for, because of circumstances that have come up. And the second, item B, is the resignation of Linda Wiley from the Animal Care Advisory Board, and she is moving out of the county. So both of these resignations are in proper order and ask that you approve items A and B.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
I'm really struggling to hear what's happening, sorry.
Okay, well, so Mike.
I can, I can, I can repeat what had, what had happened. The first two items, A and B, are resignations from boards that were appointments by, by former County Commissioner Michael O'Donnell and that now will be your appointments once these resignations are accepted. Item A is a resignation from the Mental Health Advisory Board by Kathy Bond. Item B is a resignation of Linda Wiley from the Animal Care Advisory Board and asked the commission, we had asked the commission to accept these resignations.
Okay, so item A and B, we've put together. Commissioner Lopez, so I'll, I can make a motion that we accept the resignations as presented, if that's easier.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, okay. There's a motion and anybody want a second? You want a second this? Commissioner Lopez?
Yep, I can second.
Okay. Motion and a second on items A and B. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Next item, please.
Item C, accept the resignation of Tim Lentz from the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department Board of Electrical Appeals.
Okay. Mike Papun?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And Mike, can you move the microphone this close from your, you gotta get, you gotta get that microphone.
Real close?
Yeah. There you go. That way they can help.
Sound like a singer here or something. Item C and D again are items of similar nature and can be handled together if it's the will of the board. Item C is the resignation of Tim Lentz, and he is currently the electrical engineering position on the Board of County Commission and a Board of County Commission appointment for the building and area, Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department Board of Electrical Appeals. And item D, we are replacing Mr. Lentz with Christopher Vale, and he will now fill that electrical engineering position on this board. The resolution for appointing Christopher Vale is in proper form and ask that you approve the resolution and accept the resignation of Mr. Lentz.
Okay. Yeah, we've been briefed on that, if I recall, so is there any other comments? I'll make a motion that we approve items C and D together.
Second.
Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, accept the resignation of David Walde from the Wichita-Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Items E and F can be combined as well. Item E is the resignation of Mr. Walde from the, and this is actually, goes back to Commissioner Norton, his appointment to the Sedgwick, Wichita-Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board. This is a District 2 appointment. And item F is a resolution appointing Susan Turnus, which is Commissioner Lopez's appointment to the Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board. This is a joint board with the City of Wichita. It consists of 33, 33 members and they, they address on a monthly base, basis disability issues that affect citizens in Sedgwick County. So the resolution appointing Susan Turnus is in proper form. We'd ask that you approve the resolution and accept the resignation of Mr. Walde.
Okay, thank you for that information. Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, so I just approved that, make a motion that we approve both items E and F.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other comments? I don't see any, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item G, COVID-19 community survey results.
Okay, we are, we're Zoom again? Okay. All right, I welcome Dr. Elizabeth Abla to the commission meeting, and I believe you're on Zoom and you're going to give us a presentation. Welcome. You're on mute, I believe.
Thank you so much. I also called in just in case, so that is my phone number, just in case there are some problems. So if there is limited bandwidth, I will turn off my video and/or get on the phone. So I'd like to share my screen if that is possible.
Sure.
Okay, terrific. Thanks so much. I really appreciate your willingness to hear about these results from this study. This was a study that was commissioned by the South Central Region, and now I am unable to get out of this. There we go. So this was a study commissioned by the South Central Metropolitan Region and conducted by my team and myself at K School of Medicine Wichita. The seven county region, which includes Sedgwick, Sumner, Butler, Cowley, Harvey, Reno, and Marion Counties, they worked together to identify a survey set of questions that they wanted to ask of us, or excuse me, ask of citizens in the seven county region. And we do have the results for each of the seven counties. We also have results for all seven counties cumulatively, but for the purposes of this presentation, we are, I'm going to only talk about the Sedgwick County results. I will note at this time that if any of the commissioners have any questions in particular that you would like me to conduct some additional analyses on, I'd be happy to do that. I'm giving a very short presentation, so happy to entertain any questions after the fact as well. But the goal of this survey was to identify what percentage of citizens in these seven counties would be interested in receiving a COVID-19 vaccine, and we wanted to have a better understanding of the sources that they trust. So they, they trust various physicians or researchers, pharmacies, media, et cetera, so we could have a better understanding of how to reach folks. The survey was open from the 16th of November through the 16th of December of 2020, and it was available in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese. However, I will note that it launched with English and unfortunately, before we were able to get the Spanish and Vietnamese translations, this resulted in very, very few respondents completing the surveys in Spanish or Vietnamese. So it was the same link, which I think was an advantage because people could just select the language that they wanted. However, it is unfortunate, we really did have a very small sample size amongst those who spoke Spanish or Vietnamese as their primary language. The survey was completed by 2.3% of the Sedgwick County population. Overall, we had more than 15,000 respondents for all seven counties. We only obviously had those who were 18 or older complete the survey. Most identified as female, you can see the age breakdown. We also had a smaller percent, those who were 18 to 24 years. And clearly you can see we had most of our respondents being, reporting that they were non-Hispanic, white or Caucasian. In terms of, a few more demographics so you have a sense of who actually completed the survey, about a third are saying that they, they are a college graduate, about income was more than 22,000. So that's a very easy way to get a sense of annual income and a lot of folks do not feel comfortable responding as to what their income is, so we try to just give a binary, do you make more or less in this specific amount? Then we ask for professions, and you can see the largest proportion was actually retired, and that's only at 16%. We had healthcare and social service industries and education. So the punchline, this is the most important slide. We see that about 65% are reporting that they plan to get the COVID-19 vaccine. You'll see another 19% are reporting that they may get the vaccine. We had some qualitative data and that really, those data suggested that there is a sort of a watch and wait phenomenon happening, and I would imagine that's where a lot of that 19% is, where they want to see how others do, and if folks are, seem to be resilient with the vaccine, then they might consider that. So that, but at this point, we have about 16% that are planning to not get the COVID, a COVID-19 vaccine. Who do they trust? Residents reported out of a number of responses, and you can see actually here, this is very complicated slide, or it's not complicated, it's just very busy. The green bar represents that they agree or strongly agree, whereas the yellow bar on the right suggests that they disagree or strongly disagree. So these are the various trusted sources, and you'll see at the very far left, the greatest, most trusted source is a doctor or a medical provider. The next is a scientist or researcher. USD CDC, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention is next, very closely with the State Health Department at KDHE. My local health department is right neck and neck with that as well, and FDA, very similar. We dramatically drop off here with local news, national news, and even worse, social media. So there is definitely a recognition that social media are not a trusted source, and it's something for us to be considering. In terms of the vaccine concerns, again, the green is a moderate to extreme concern on the left. On the right is the no or slight concern. So this, you want to be thinking about what, why folks might not want to get the back, a COVID-19 vaccine. You will see here that the long-term side effects of the vaccine, very similar to the vaccine will not be safe, and also similar, risk of vaccination is more than the benefit. So those three really we are thinking about is a concept of safety, that folks are not thinking that it is going to be safe for them. The fourth, to the right of that, is the vaccine will not be effective. And we're really seeing those as the top theme when it comes down to why people will not get the vaccine. We're seeing that folks think it is, it has been developed much too rapidly, that we've been dealing with cancer, for instance, for decades, and we haven't been able to solve that. So there's a lot of suspicion as to, do we really know what COVID-19 is, and can we really actually get a vaccine for it this quickly? I would like to point out to the very right, the lack of time and lack of access to a healthcare provider, this is, these are the most minor concerns of the options that are listed. And I would like to point out the personal, religious, moral, or ethical reasons. That is also a very slight concern in terms of, with respect to these other concerns that were addressed here. So as I mentioned, we have the qualitative data, which I think is really helpful to get a better understanding of what are the concerns of the Sedgwick County citizens. The trust of the vaccine is a really big one. They do not believe that it could be, a vaccine could be developed so quickly. And there is also this, this group that suggested that there is not a, a need for the vaccine, that they've already had COVID and it wasn't that bad, and maybe that, again, going back to not trusting the vaccine, maybe the vaccine is actually going to elicit a response that is worse than COVID-19 itself. And then finally, as I mentioned earlier, there are this, there are these folks who are on the fence and want to see what are the long terms, long-term side effects. So that's really it in a nutshell. I'm happy to give, again, give more information if you would like any. But what is, the, the purpose of this was to get a better understanding of how many folks are interested in completing the vaccine 19, oh my goodness gracious. The, the, the purpose of this project is to determine how many are wanting to get the COVID-19 vaccine in both doses. And we can see that we, we have some useful data here. I will say that I do believe based off of the concerns that were identified, a lot of myths are out there, and I know that Kate Flavin and, and others in communications, we are planning already and have already, they have been moving forward on creating a lot of messages to address these myths and the misinformation. We do have a second survey, that is the same survey, that will be available for another round in the future, so we will be able to administer this and determine if any of our, of the citizens' opinions have changed, that we might be able to see a shift in those opinions and attitudes. And we will have these results posted to the county's vaccine page for COVID-19. So I'm happy to accept any questions at this time.
Okay, are there questions for Dr.?
I don't know for sure. Find it interesting on your trusted sources slide? That's the first, well, the second paragraph. Anyway, it's interesting to note that a lot of our decisions have been based on those top green bars, doctors, scientists, the health departments, and to me, it's comforting to see that social media is, is the least reliable for information according to this. So that's helpful, at least for me to see, along with the national news, of course. That's one observation. I don't know anybody else. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Abla, for the presentation this morning. I do have a couple of short questions. Did you happen, happen to capture the ZIP code data of the respondents?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. No, we did not ask for the ZIP code. We wanted to make sure that folks felt comfortable in sharing their information without any sense that they were going to be tracked or identified, so we did not include that.
So, but it was confirmed that they are Sedgwick County residents that responded? Is that also?
Nope, it is self-report. So in fact, it was very interesting. This was sent to many other counties as well, so to the point that we were convinced that Kingman County was one of the seven counties in the seven county region, because we had so many responses from Kingman County. So no, we, we cannot confirm that. This is completely self-report and I, I can tell you generally that is the case. People do not want to complete a survey just for fun and, and provide misinformation, so we cannot verify the veracity of the data, but I would assume that these are pretty, and it's consistent with national data, so I would assume that they're pretty close.
Want to clarify on, excuse me, on the slide that talks about the respondent demographics?
I'm sorry, could you say that again, please?
The slide that refers to respondent demographics, it talks about.
Oh, yes.
The top, the top professions of the 17 listed. Do we know that, for example, what, so right now it says 16% of retired, for example, which is a great thing to understand, but I'm curious, what percentage of our, what's the total number of, should say, what's the percentage of retired, retired folks that would want to get the vaccine, which might be a different number, other words, we might say that 80% of retired folks would want to get the vaccine. But I don't, I don't know the number. I don't know if that's included in this study at all, but I think the 16% refers to the, the percentage of the total number, which would be 18, or would be 16%, but I'm curious of the population of people who are considered themselves retired, how many of those folks would want to get the vaccine? Does that make sense?
It does make sense, and you are correct. This is that 16% of all Sedgwick County respondents reported in being retired, and I'm absolutely, I'm very happy to get that data to you, Commissioner Howell, to indicate what percent of the retired population indicated that they plan to get a vaccine or they are considering getting vaccine.
And along with that question, I would like to know about the other, the other two that you've listed here, the healthcare industry and the education industry. I think those would also be important for us to understand. So if you have access to that data, I'd like to at least have those three broke out because I think it represents a good portion of our community and.
I actually have it right here. Would you like it right now?
Certainly, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Let me pull this up really quickly. I apologize. Okay. All right, are you able to see this Word document here?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Okay, terrific. So you can see the plan to get the vaccine, and this is that group that's in the middle that's on the fence that may. So we decided to keep them distinct, but you will see here we have this by all demographics and are retired. You can see, we did this by the profession, not by the group. So I would be happy to run amongst those who are retired, what percent reported getting, but you can see very clearly here that it is the, the largest proportion between the 1273, the 157, and the 73. So I, I would suggest that's probably the largest proportion.
Yeah, thank you. The reason I ask the question is because I think it helps us understand our population of people in each, each of the phases. For example, we know that right now we're trying to get to all of Phase 2, which would be essentially everything you just listed there. The education would be part of that. Healthcare has already been involved in Phase, Phase 1, and of course, retired folks, if they're 65 and older, would be part of our Phase 2 population. So I'd like to just kind of get a sense of what's the number of people? I know we said there's 111,000 people, maybe that's the right number, but I think the number's actually a little higher than that. I'm, I'm calculating probably somewhere between 125,000 to 150,000 people would probably be included in these groups. And so I'd like to just do some work on that, and I think the data would be very useful. So thank you for the, thank you for the presentation.
You bet, absolutely.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And thank you, Dr. Abla, for the information. Really, the only slide that concerns me or the most important slide that says 65% of the population plan to get the vaccine, that doesn't get us to herd immunity. And hopefully those 19%. And hopefully, those 19% that will, may get the vaccine, will hopefully get us to herd immunity. So I agree that that is a critical slide. And hopefully, through some kind of communications and advertising, we can convince that 19%, to move over to the will get category, so we can get herd immunity. I don't know if you've got any comments on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, that's a really great point. And we, I do believe that the concerns that were addressed are very, very much based off of misinformation. And I think that being able to swing the 19% or at least a good proportion, I think that is feasible with good information. For instance, the side effects, the clear majority for vaccines on the whole, regardless of whether it's COVID-19 vaccine or not, some type of vaccine, the clear majority, it's like 95%, something along those lines, of the side effects occur within the first few days. And a lot of people are continuing to bring up this concern of long-term side effects. And that's just really not, it's not an issue. There is a lot of concern about fertility, concerns around fertility and what might happen with that in the, down the road. There is, absolutely, there are no data that suggests that that is a concern. There's a lot of concern about aborted fetuses being included in this. And again, that is not a concern. So I think there's, again, a lot of misinformation that now that we know what the messages are, what the concerns are, that we will be able to appropriately address those concerns.
Any other questions? Commissioner Cruz or Commissioner Lopez, you have any questions, comments? Okay, that's a no from Lopez, and a no from Commissioner Cruz. Okay, Doctor, thanks again. Always good to see you, and you always do a nice job presenting to us. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you so much.
Make a motion to receive and file.
Second?
There's a motion and a second to receive and file the community survey review. Don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item H, Presentation of the Appraiser's Annual Report of Real Property Value Trends in Sedgwick County.
Good morning, Mr. Clark.
Good morning.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Yeah, welcome to the commission meeting.
Thank you.
Looking forward to your report.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Mark Clark, County Appraiser. This morning, I'm going to providing, be providing an overview of the 2021 Annual Real Estate Mass Appraisal. Let's start with some Appraiser's Office duties. These are outlined in statute and PVD directives. Inspect each property within Sedgwick County every six years. Discover, list and value all property with significant changes. Update appraisals each year to assure that properties are valued at fair market value. And let's remember that January 1st is the official statutory appraisal date. Since we're talking about real property this morning, let's look at some key dates. Once again, January 1 is the official appraisal date. March 1 is the date that real property value equation notices are mailed. And June 1 is the appraiser's certification values to the county clerk. Parcel growth. From 20 to 21, we had, from 2020 to 2021, we had 1,103 new parcels. Those continue to grow. And that currently, as of January 2021, we had 225,614. Parcels by class. The big blue on the pie chart is the residential at 79%, commercial at 6%, agricultural at 6%, vacant at 4%, exempt at 3%, farmstead at 2%. Those are rounded, if you were to put the decimal places in, then utilities and not-for-profit and other would also have, but on here, we've rounded, so there's zero. That continues to, residential continues to, to grow. Sales activity, all classes for real property. Sales increased by 930 or 7.2% from 2019 to 2020. Low interest rates drove increased demand. And we are approaching areas of sales now that are equivalent to 2006 and 2007. Residential property makes up about 58% of the total assessed value of Sedgwick County. New dwellings. New dwellings are defined as single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. As far as new dwellings, they increased by 302 units or 25.6% from 2019 to 2020. Most of the activity were single-family homes that were priced above $285,000. Residential inventory, month supply. In a normal market, in a normal market, you have month supply from four months to six months. We can't even show the six-month line on this chart, and everything is below the four month. This is not what you would call a normal market, because supply is very much constrained. There is a severe lack of availability in the housing stock for sale. So if you look at this chart, it is from 2016 through 2020. And the bottom line, that purple line, is the 2020 line. We started out in January just below 2, and we ended up in December just above 1. That is incredible. I mean, you have a month's supply of inventory. That is really quite a statement there. And when you look at why that supply is so constrained, well, it costs so much to build new. And at the same time, when you talk about supplies to either build new or to remodel, I mean, the cost is, is very high. So why is that? Well, natural disasters. You have wildfires that have destroyed lots of our forests and hurricanes. So they're moving those supplies into areas so they can rebuild along the coast. And then you have other growth areas such as Texas and Florida. You have cities there that are just growing incredibly. And so that continues to be the story. There is constrained supply. And with low interest rates, it really causes prices to increase. Let's look at how we compare with large counties. Once again, in a normal market, when you talk about supply, it's four to six months. And every county, and I'm talking of the large counties, Sedgwick, Johnson, Wyandotte, Douglas, and Shawnee, they are all below 2. And they are all trending towards 1 or below. Look at the green line, that is Shawnee County. Wyandotte, and it's very interesting to see where Johnson ends up on this. They start out at a month and a half, and they wind up just below 1. So it's, it's really a very interesting phenomenon to watch. It's even more interesting to try to value in that phenomenon. Residential inventory, median days on the market. This is for Sedgwick County, 2016 to 2020. Once again, that dark line at the very bottom, that purple line, we started in January at 20, and we ended up about 9 in December. And I personally know people who sold property, and they sold it the same day or two or three days later. And even when real estate agents are making their deals, you still have people making offers of the same house. Fee appraisers have reported that when they're doing bank appraisals, sometimes they can't even put comps on there, they're just having to put listings. The market's moving that fast. Now, let's look at median days on the market comparing large counties. Well, there we are in the, in the purple. We just went over that. But look at Shawnee. In late January, and it popped up above Sedgwick, but then it came back down in late February, and it stayed below. It is the lowest. And if you look at Douglas, you wonder what's going on there, and it makes you wonder, is some of their activity there wasn't COVID-related? And then look at how smooth the Sedgwick line is. I had been on several virtual meetings with some of the real estate professionals, and Dr. Longhauffer and Jeremy Hill. It's very interesting, and we should be quite proud of the real estate industry here in Sedgwick County. They have worked to make a somewhat seamless, safe, and effective way of carrying out transactions. And they're to be commended for that. Median sales price. The median sales price increased by 4.7%. For 2020, it was $177,000. Commercial. Commercial property represents about 31% of the total assessed value in Sedgwick County. Now, this is where we get to some interesting stuff. It's all interesting, but this here is probably going to pique your interest. Value impacts for commercial. We found through research that there were two primary factors that did impact the commercial market, and that was COVID-19 and the Boeing 737 MAX. For COVID-19, we created and conducted a property owner and manager survey. And I'm going to say that I will ask Commissioner Meitzner, being the chairman, if you would find out how you want that released. County Council's office is saying we cannot release that until the commissioners have had time to look at that and digest it. I need to probably do something virtual with you, or we can do it via email. I can just send the findings. And if you have questions, I'll be glad to answer however you wish me to. But the surveys themselves are protected. We did, they are full of confidential financial information. And we did tell people that their anonymity would, we wouldn't disclose any of their names.
So is that a, is that a requirement, a part of your?
That is, that is a statute. If it's confidential financial information, it isn't released.
Okay. I don't recall in the past that we had to do this, but?
No, understand, and let me continue here, because we researched the impacts nationally and locally. We collaborated with other counties, the large counties, and also the small counties. And we worked very closely with PVD. PVD, the director has been, he's had his thumb on this, and he has talked to us a lot, and he has helped us understand and has told us and given us certain pointers as to how to handle the situation. But we are not the only county this year, and I do repeat, this year, who did a survey. All the major counties did. Also, when it comes to the Boeing 737 MAX, we researched impacts locally and collaborated with the supply chain. Going back to the, to the survey, that is something that we felt we needed to do, because with something that you can't see, and people are getting sick, and people are saying, well, I can't go to work, all right, that this could have an impact on, you know? So we just wanted to make sure that we understood what was going on. And the director thought that was an excellent idea, and so we executed it. I commissioned that study.
My thought is that you, why don't you share that, not only myself, with the commission? And if commissioners have a question, they can get with you directly on it?
Absolutely.
Including myself?
Yes.
I don't know the size and scope of the survey, but?
Well, we had roughly 1,400 respondents, and that is approximately 18% of the commercial property out there. And I was quite pleased with that. I've done surveys in the past, and I think that it was a very interesting survey. In fact, I do have a few things about the survey.
While you're looking that up, okay, Mr. Papoon, so if, I'm trying to think, if he shares, if this report is shared with all of us right now ahead of time, then it, is it a public document by virtue of just sharing it with us all?
Yes, it would be, under the County Social and Records Act, so.
Why don't?
I think I'm going to need to get together with Trish Parker, who works with the Appraiser's Office, and?
Okay.
Get an answer to this. But I wasn't told that this was going to?
Okay.
Come up.
Mark, why don't you, why don't you share it with, with Mr. Papoon and maybe copy the manager, if he's so inclined?
I'd be glad to do so.
And then we'll follow up with that, yeah?
Okay.
Because I, it just didn't, it registered right away that, you, but you want to eventually go public with this anyway?
Yes.
And you've, you feel confident you've redacted confidential information?
Oh, absolutely.
And, and so.
And I will also tell you that, oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Cruz?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having a really hard time hearing you. Is there any?
Are you hearing me or hearing Mark?
I don't know if you guys could speak closer to the mic?
Right, hearing me or hearing Mark?
Can you hear me now?
Both of you.
Okay, oh, sorry about that.
I can tell you that this survey, we were very careful. Patricia Parker has reviewed that survey, make sure that it's, it's good to go. But we will definitely get with Mr. Papoon.
Please.
And, and we'll, we'll make sure it's done just right.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz, just, this survey is, it needs to be released, and we've been talking about, he's, he's going to review it with, with Mike Papoon, and Mike's going to confirm with the legal contacts. Because if it was shared with all of us, then it basically is a public document ahead of, ahead of time. So I don't want to see it yet. We'll take the advice of Mr. Papoon after that, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We also found through our research that there is a great deal of market uncertainty in the commercial market. And therefore, for 2021, commercial values will remain relatively flat when compared to 2020 values. I can also tell you that when valuing commercial properties, the Appraiser's Office did not take into consideration any CARES funding or any program offered through federal, state, or local that offered COVID relief. Commercial property sales increased by 1.9% over 2019. Once again, low interest rates continues to move that market. Commercial building permit activity. Commercial building activity decreased by 11.5% in 2020. Excuse me. Get on the right slide. The figures above the charts indicate the number of permits for commercial that were issued in a given year. And what's important to remember is that contractors and developers continue to report to us a shortage of skilled labor. That means it takes longer for a project to get done, usually more than a year, sometimes several years. So for example, even though in 2020, the number is 945, the number of permits that our commercial appraisers went out and looked at as far as new construction would have been over 1,200, because they were going back to permits that were taken. been over 1,200, because they were going back to permits that were taken out in 2017 and 2018 and 2019 that were not finished. And as they are completed, we make sure that we are closing those permits, signing off in our Orion Camma system, and getting that new construction. And even if there's incremental new construction done each year, we pick that up so that it's reported to the county clerk, so that they can report that out as new construction to the tax jurisdictions. 2020 preliminary appraisal ratio studies. Now, to be in statistical compliance, the appraiser has to be between 90 and 110. You look at those numbers and you say, Mark, you're not in compliance. Well, yes, we were in compliance for 2020. However, when we started the valuation process for 2021, this is where we started at. And the market has slid, and those ratios have definitely come down. Sales ratio study for residential. If you look up at the top, you can see that that is the compliance high, 110, red line down at 90, that's the compliance low. The black line is your fair market value, that's 100, and at 95, that is the Cedric County Appraiser's target. We don't like putting, we don't like using 1 as a target. We like 95, it is a more cautious and conservative approach to valuation, and we believe that is the best way to handle valuation in Cedric County. As you can tell, yes, we are low, but we are in statistical compliance. Many counties would just put 1, and the property owners would have to live with it. I don't do that. We don't do that in our office. We shoot for 95. For 19, the number was 91.5. Sales ratio commercial. Commercial is even more difficult to be in statistical compliance, and for 19, they were. Once again, 90 being your compliance low, 110 being your compliance high, 1 being fair market value, 95 being the Cedric County appraisal target. Agriculture represents 437,933 acres, or 68% of the land in Cedric County is devoted to agricultural use. Agricultural makes up less than 1% of the total assessed value in Cedric County, and it's important to remember that PVD sets the agricultural use values for the entire state, and those are not fair market values, those are use values. There's a formula for that. PVD has a contract with K-State, their statistics department, and with the ag department, and the three work together to get those values, and then they send them down to the county appraiser at the beginning of the year, and they are assigned to the appropriate parcels. So we come to the screen that most people wait for, and here we can see that for large residential parcels, 19% will receive no change in value. 79% will increase in value with a typical change of 6%. I will tell you that we tapped that market down, those values down as much as we could, and they could have been higher. We kept tapping it down, but the market in residential is very strong. And 2% will receive a decrease in value, typical change is 5%. Commercial parcels, 56% will receive a no change in value, 29% will increase in value, typical change 1%. 15% will receive a decrease in value, typical change 2%. Agricultural parcels, 34% will receive a no change in value, 27% will increase in value with a typical change of 9%, and that is usually for irrigated land and grassland. 39% will decrease in value, typical change 2%. Mailing of value notices. We will, Cedric County Appraiser's Office will mail value notices only to property owners who had a change in appraised value or classification from 2020. Approximately 166,100 real property value notices we mailed for 2021, and that represents about 74% of all real property parcels in Cedric County. If you do not receive a value notice after beginning March 1, you can go to our website, www.cedriccounty.org, and you can review the information regarding your property, you can print off a value notice, you can print off PRC, there's a host of information that you have access to, but if you print off that value notice, it will include the instructions on how to file an appeal. Appeals process. Owners who do not think that their values reflect fair market value, or would like an explanation of how their value was determined, can flip over that value notice, fill it out, send it back to the appraiser's office within 30 days of the date of mailing. Date of mailing is on the front of the value notice. Appeal meetings will begin March 16, 2021, and appeals will be done via telephone. I want to keep public safe, I need to keep my staff safe, I only have so much staff, and it's important that we get through these major processes. Uniform and equal. This is a statement the PVD insists that we always make. Remember that the county appraiser is required by law to value property in a uniform and equal manner, and should not be considered an adversary. Increases or decreases in property values do not change the amount of tax dollars needed for local services. Personal property. Now, on the Fast Facts, we always put a blurb on there about personal property, and I thought since I'm having a little FaceTime with the commission this morning, I would just put one slide up there about personal property, and some people tend to forget this. So, personal property represents about 4% of the total assessed value. Personal property renditions are due back to the appraiser's office by March 15 to avoid penalty, that is in statute. Valuation notices for personal property will be mailed on April 30, and the deadline to file for a personal property appeal will be March 17. As you can tell from the bar chart there, that personal property accounts are growing, and you wonder why, since, you know, CIME after 2006 is exempt, well, it's watercraft. I mean, once the legislature reduced the assessment ratio on watercraft, those things really, it's like somebody sprinkled Miracle-Gro on watercraft, boats and jet skis. Customer service. Customer service is something the county appraiser's office takes very seriously. We have an information and assistance division, and they are willing to help you and answer your questions, provide information that you may need for your hearing. If you are interested in the appeals process, or you want real property values for your neighborhood, or if you want real property sales, please contact us. That information is also on the web. We just want you to know that we are there to serve you and help you in however way we can. In conclusion, commissioners, 2020 was a difficult year, especially in light of COVID. I want to thank my staff for their dedication and hard work. They've done a great job. There has been sacrifice, I do recognize that, and their efforts are appreciated. Thank you, commissioners, for your time. I will stand for any questions.
Mark, thank you for this, thank you for this report. It's a lot to digest, but it's great information, and I was going to ask about your staff, but you already commented about it, and so...
Thank you.
I'm glad, my personal thanks to you and your staff. Maybe a question or two? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. I'm trying to speak right into the microphone here. You had a couple of slides that seemed like they might need some clarification. You had a slide that is titled 2020 Preliminary Appraisal Sales Ratio Study, and it shows residential was 89.4%. But the very next page talks about the residential was 91.5%. Can you please explain?
Sure. Like I was saying, we're in compliance, but when we started the valuation for 2021, those ratios had slid down.
Okay, all right. I am curious if someone could do some analysis, this might be, this might require some finance staff to do this perhaps, or maybe the treasurer's office can help figure this out, but the dollars that we receive from personal property, that last slide you talked about personal property, the dollars that are levied due to personal property, there should be some analysis done, because I think what has happened in Kansas for a very long time, and you alluded to this, is watercraft were not, watercraft were not registered in Kansas. The legislature made a change, and their thought was people would register those in Kansas, and as a consequence, we would see the tax revenue in Kansas that maybe we haven't seen in the past, even though I think that they lowered, generally, they lowered the fees and costs for registering of a watercraft in Kansas. The result of that is there's more registrations in Kansas. So that would be some type of conclusion. What happened to the dollars? I'd like to know, what was it before versus what is it now? And I don't think it's not completely in your, not completely in your department, but I think someone in the management or finance world should look at that and find out, because I think the consequence of this is we still, we still see an awful lot of vehicles that are registered outside of our state.
True.
And I think that the same argument could be used there. Our registration, our cost to register a car in Kansas are very, very high when you compare the cost to other states, and I think that there should be some type of conclusion on watercraft and how that should apply over to possibly making some changes on our vehicle property tax, property registrations. Okay, so I'll ask for that, I'll ask for that, so I'll be following up with that. Hopefully, someone has that action item, Mr. Manager. I am very interested in Senate Bill 13. I don't know if you've been following that or not, but one of the very first slides you have here has a lot of key dates, and I'm curious, I know those are current dates that are defined in statute, and I don't know that Senate Bill 13 has any date changes on your schedule or on your calendar.
I hope not.
You hope not?
I keep, I keep looking, I haven't seen any, but I hope that they don't do something at the last minute and make things very difficult.
I think if they're going to insert, if you will, a lot of activity around the budget, they're going to have to back some of these dates back, change them to the left a little bit, but your start date might need to also change to the left. I mean, I think the entire calendar needs to go left about maybe 30 to 60 days.
That wouldn't surprise me. I mean, we have talked briefly about with the director about whatever changes might occur. I know PVD is concerned, we're looking at that. However, it will cause in our office mayhem, because we are understaffed. We live by these dates. That is the only way it works for us.
So if every date on there was changed by the same amount, that would change the office significantly?
I believe it would. I mean, the statutory appraisal date is January 1. Now, if they're going to change that to something else, you know, we're just going to have to look at those dates, but if you keep January 1, and we're going to follow down, and you're going to move things up, that's going to be somewhat devastating.
I understand, I don't want to compress your schedule, I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting that maybe the start date, January 1, should back up the same number of days as every other date on the slide, so...
That, that's possible. I mean, that'll be interesting to see.
Okay, well, that bill is still in, has a movement in the legislature, and I think this has not really been addressed adequately by anybody, and I'm very concerned about that. Let me go on and ask a couple of other little questions. In that bill also talks about normal maintenance will have an exemption. So if you, someone replaces a driveway or replaces a roof, they're saying that won't change their appraisal, how would you...
We don't, that doesn't have any impact on what we do, nothing.
So if someone, well, fair market value, if someone has a new driveway or a new roof, I would think their house would be worth more than someone who has a roof that needs to be replaced and a driveway that's messed up?
We're going to look at the condition of the property, but we're not going to go out there and just nickel and dime on a driveway or a roof. I mean, that there is common maintenance.
Okay, well, their argument is that if the house is in good condition, it's worth more than a very same house is in bad condition. If you continue to use the term fair market value, I think that that's an understandable point there, but they're trying to exempt that normal maintenance, which would say the house is in bad shape, if it's the same configuration as another house that's in good shape, they're worth the same, they have the same appraisal value, and that's not fair market value.
I understand.
So I'm very concerned about that part of this bill.
Well, understand, appraisers, we have sort of looked at that and said, it doesn't really impact us, because what our understanding is from what was written was that you are, not you, but legislators are thinking that we're going out there and we're just finding a reason to jump values, and people come in and say, well, I changed a window, and you increased my value. We didn't increase their value because they... I understand your point. I mean, there are certain things that will can change the condition of a house, and on that point, yes, your value could increase, but for the little things that I've heard legislators complain about being, I painted my house, I changed a window, I put a new screen door on my house. No, we're not going to nickel and dime people for that.
And my follow-up question, maybe this is a request, but I think the slide that talks about the valuation summary, I'd like to have that for the last number of years put together, collate that into a, so we can see those side by side. It says residential properties, for example, 79% increase in value, typical change was 6%. Again, that's probably the most important slide in this whole stack, but that's the same slide I would like to see maybe going back to last year and the year before, because I guarantee you, we're going to have a lot of people who are going to make the assumption that their taxes, again, overall, if we left the mill levy alone, we know what that means. That's what, that's going to equate to a tax increase, if you want to define it that way. And again, there's a big debate in the legislature as to how you define the word tax increase, but I think when there's more dollars to government, that's a tax increase, and that's how, that's how the legislature is looking at this. And so, this is a huge increase again, but this, you know, I understand fair market values did go up, the question is whether it will capture that in a budget going forward, so that's for us to figure out, but thank you for the presentation, but I'd like to get those slides back to back, if you don't mind, as another report. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome. I look forward to this briefing each year, because it gives us a good idea of where we've been and where we're going in the future. But the one thing that happens is when you mail those, when the county mails those property valuation notices out on one March each year, shortly thereafter, that's when I get the bulk of the emails that says, oh, the county commission has told the appraiser to raise my property values so that they can have more money to do more things. We do appoint you every four years, but do we have, do we have any authority whatsoever to tell you to raise the value of any property whatsoever?
No, sir, that is not the county commission's job. Director of Property Valuation controls the appraisal process statewide. County commissioners do not involve themselves in that.
Very good. Well, that's the response that I always give, is the PVD, Property Evaluation Division, is one that you really work for day in and day out, and you have to account to. But it's just a comment, I guarantee you that I'm going to get emails again after we send those valuation notices out, but I want to make sure that the public now recognizes that we do not control anything that you do on the appraisal values.
That is correct. I would also like to say that when you get emails or phone calls, feel free to send them to me, and we'll get on those immediately.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mark, for being here.
Thank you, Mark, for being here today and for your presentation. I, I too have a question about the 79% increased value of 6%. Can we go to that slide real fast? So up in the residential partials, so this, the typical change was 6% of these, 79% of these residential partials. So was that because 79% of these folks didn't fall between the 90 to 110 range?
That may, that could be a, a reason, but at the same time, looking at the sales in the various neighborhoods, I mean, some sales didn't have that much. There are other neighborhoods who had quite a few sales, and that would impact their, their values in those neighborhoods. So your, your thinking is, is, is correct. But there are other circumstances that can also cause that increase.
Okay, because I too will probably receive some, some questions. My other questions were asked, so I appreciate your presentation. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez, do you have any questions? Okay. It's a little bit, a lot to digest, but it kind of all makes sense. Mark, I would, I want to also thank you and your staff. I recall I've had a, two or three questions about, from citizens or property owners, and I have one commercial, and, and your staff and your response back directly to the answer of those questions to those citizens has been, is commendable. So I forgot to thank you publicly for that, but.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and please share with your staff that the, the reaction and, and public service to those property holders is, is much appreciated from my perspective.
Thank you.
My other comment is, or two more comments. One is, can we get a copy of this electronically?
Yes.
We can. It's something that if I get a question, I'd, I'd sure like to share this presentation with, as I get questions.
No problem, yes, sir.
And lastly, related to the transparency bill, I know there's a lot of, a lot of questions going on, and it's been pointed out. But I am fully supportive that included in the transparency bill that, that between postage and personnel increases at the Clerk's office, personnel increases at your office, that we will absorb, that we need to also be very transparent with the public that because of the transparency bill, we've had to increase personnel and, and, and make sure that the public knows that directly. So whatever it is it's going to take when that hits.
Just let me know, I'll be glad to.
I know, but I just know that, that I'll be supportive of if it's going to take another, whatever it's going to take for your office to get up to, to abide by the quote transparency bill, then we don't, I don't have any choice but to support an increase in personnel and costs to get this accomplished.
Thank you.
And I think that's, we got any other questions? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
We've made a motion to receive and file, and a second. Any other questions or comments? I don't see any, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thanks again, Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, Zone Change from SF20 Single Family Residential to SF10 Single Family Residential Generally Located 1,000 Feet East of South Greenwich Road on the North Side of East Pawnee Road.
Okay. Hey, Scott.
Good morning.
Thanks. Welcome back to the meeting.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mark, and make sure that you speak into the microphones. The Commissioner Cruz and Lopez can listen.
Will do.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to present today. This is Zone Change 2020-48. This zone change, I'll change the map here, is for a property located just to the, approximately to the north and east of the intersection of Greenwich and Pawnee. The property is approximately 4.29 acres in size and has two structures existing on it. The properties to the north, south, east, and west of the subject's site are zoned SF20 and are developed as single-family homes. You can see them here on the aerial. Cedric County Public Works has indicated that South Ellison Street, which is located right abutting to the east of the subject's site, does not have sufficient right-of-way to support construction of a street meeting the minimum paving standards. The applicant is in the process of replating the property and has deferred the replat pending the outcome of this zoning, zone change request. The applicant will be required to dedicate additional right-of-way and is guaranteeing paving of the street adjacent to the property as part of that plating process. In addition, the area is served by City of Wichita Water and Sewer. Wichita Public Works has indicated that the water line will need to be replaced, or the applicant will need to get the fire department to sign off on allowing fire hydrants on a six-inch water line instead of an eight-inch water line prior to construction on the site. The applicant will also be required to submit a study on the sanitary sewer utilities to ensure that capacity is adequate. Wichita Public Works has indicated these issues would need to be resolved during the plating process and prior to construction. The agent for the applicant has confirmed, and they are here today, the agent is, that any improvements to the street or utilities would be assessed to the property, not to the neighborhood. The public hearing for this zone change request was held on January 7 at the Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval 10 to 0. At the public hearing, individuals spoke in opposition of the rezoning. Comments from the individuals ranged from worries about sewer capacity, the cost of paving the street, and to the number of homes that would be placed on the lot. 20 petitions were submitted in opposition to the request. The protest petitions total 15% of the net protest area. This percent does not meet the state minimum 20% for a valid protest requiring a larger majority of the votes on the commission. As a result, the rezoning can be approved by a simple majority or three out of five. In terms of alternatives, you have the, the recommendation, which is to approve the rezoning, which takes a simple majority, three out of five votes. You can deny the application by making alternative findings and override the MAPC recommendation. That would require four out of five, a two-thirds majority. Or three, you can return the case to the MAPC for further consideration with a statement specifying the basis for your action, which requires a simple majority. Present today is one individual, Mr. Cant, who'd like to speak on the item, and the agent for the applicant, Mr. Savoy. And with that, I'd like to go through a few photos, show you some more images from the site, and then turn over for questions. So here's where it is relative to the recommendation of the comprehensive plan, which identifies it for future residential use. Here's a picture of the site, looking in the area, looking to the northwest. This is along Ellison Street. This is south of the site. This is looking to the north of the site and to the southwest. This is one of the structures that's on the site, looking to the east. Here's the map of the protests that were received. The areas in red were the valid protests that were submitted. Again, this totals less than the 20%. There's the aerial. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. We can ask some questions now or.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think this would be an appropriate time for Commissioners to disclose whether they've had any ex parte communications with the applicant or.
And I've, I've had some ex parte emails and a couple of phone calls. I've not conversed directly with, with those. It's been one way coming to me, so I've not. But I have had ex parte communication, and it's not to influence my decision. Thank you. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I've also had ex parte contact.
I've also had ex parte contact. I've had emails, voicemails, and it's also appeared on our public agenda comments in the past. Thank you, and I have not made up mine based on those. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Howell, next.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I also have had ex parte communication. I've had numerous, numerous people from the community have, have reached out to me, and I've done my best to just simply answer questions. I've not made up my mind in any way. I'm sitting on the fence and completely unbiased coming into this hearing, looking for reasons to approve or deny. And thank you for the chance to speak to that.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I have had ex parte contact, but am keeping an open mind with this case.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lopez?
I too have had ex parte contact, emails, and voicemails as well, but I haven't made up my mind.
Okay, with that, do we have any questions right now for, for Scott? And then Commissioner Howell, do you have a question now? Or do you want to wait till after public?
I just want to, yeah, I want to clarify a couple, a couple of things that have been stated so far. So the applicant would have a requirement to, they would have to pave Ellison Street. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Does that include any type of stormwater or, or anything like that?
I'm not aware of that, sir.
Okay, but they would have to replace the, the surface at least, and so.
That's correct.
Are the fire hydrants requirement for this, for this development to go in?
Well, based on what we've collected here, in that they will have to get permission from the fire department to have it on the six-inch lines, or they will have to upgrade. I would, yes, I would assume that the fire hydrants are required.
Are there fire hydrants on the homes that are in this area around this subject property?
I am not aware of that, sir.
Okay. And how many homes are, again, this is, this is a zone change from SF20 to SF10, but is there a plat been submitted that if this is approved, it would divide, it would divide this into a number of lots?
Yes, sir.
How many lots are we talking about?
13.
Okay, under SF20, they could have us, just doing some simple math here, about, about nine homes, and you're talking about going to, you said 13?
13 homes, that's correct.
So would that be about four additional? Because if they didn't have a zone change, they could still put in nine right now. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
In terms of the numbers, I've not done the calculations, but you are correct that they could develop it for residential use.
Again, if they kept it to 20, 20,000 feet per lot.
Yep.
187,000 square feet for the lot in its entirety. So you divide that out, it's right, right about nine homes, so. So be going from roughly nine to, to 13, it sounds like, is what this is really about. Okay. I want to make sure I don't mischaracterize that. So that's all my questions for now. Looking forward to listening to the, the other folks speak. Thank you.
Okay. Don't see any other questions. So Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. You said, what was the study that you said had to be conducted?
Yes. The applicant would be required to submit a study on the sanitary sewer in the area to ensure that capacity is adequate.
Okay, and then how will the drainage be handled? Will that all be in the plating process? I mean, when you're adding all those homes, how, how is the water going to be handled?
That's correct. Storm sewer, stormwater is looked at as part of the plating process.
Okay, okay. All right.
Okay, I don't see other questions. So at this time, we will go for comments from the public. We'll open the meeting now for public comment. First up, I'm not sure who wants to address the commission. Please step forward. What, five minutes? Sorry. Sir, make sure you, we need your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address the commission. And make sure you speak into the microphone, because we have two people that are, that are remote. So, good morning. Thank you.
My name is Robert Cant. I live at 2224 South Clay Lane. This place that's being zoned is right in my backyard, right behind my house. I'm going to ask, I start out with, I'm going to ask this question. He says, the guy that says there's only 15 protest petitions. Well, one of the reasons why there's only 15 petitions is, is because it was done, the main one was done at the Planning Commission on January 7. The letter I got right here come out on January 12. It went to me and five others, five other people in the area, not the thousand people. People across the street, all around her, on Kincaid and Elwood. Nobody got this letter, so they couldn't protest, even though. And then they had to be in by January 21, by 5:00 p.m. That's one of the reasons they'd probably only got 15 protests. Now, I'm going to go on from that part of it. I'm against it totally because of the fact that all of us moved out there because that's what we like. We wanted a free air, free room, the lack of, nope, not the traffic and all that kind of stuff. Now, I'm going to bring up one thing that hasn't been brought up in this, this case. They haven't showed it much on this place, even on that map up there, haven't showed it. Across the other side of Ellison is three and some acres. If this is rezoned, you've automatically rezoned to his place. And just that property owner, and just like this property owner, neither one of them lived there. They just brought the property because they wanted to be able to build something. This guy said, well, I want to build apartment buildings out there. Well, I don't think that's going to happen, but he's going to automatically get right to rezon it. So now he can go in and put six or 13. Now, I don't know, they've come up something about nine, nine houses there as a 20. Well, right now, I'm on the other side, and there's six on the other side. So I don't see how they can get, get any more than six there if it stays as SF20. If it goes to SF10, then they can get up to 13. I don't know what kind of house they're going to go there. Rumor is they're going to be double-wide modular homes. And that, double or wide modular homes go in there, and they're going to be rental properties. That's what I've heard. That's, I can't, I don't have proof of this. That's what was going to happen when they had, when they wanted to put donor to twin homes or something like that. And that's going to decrease the property value, because who's going to want to move out there? If you got these places, these rental homes back there. And I had nothing against people that want to rent property, but rental people and rental properties, they're generally short-term. They're out there because they don't have to take care of maintenance. They don't have to do anything, keep upkeep and everything like that. So they're probably, don't, you know, have any, any value in the property for themselves, not like an owner. Owner's going to, he's going to put trees, et cetera, and like that, plants and everything like that. That probably won't happen on this. And then the other part about sewer, the other property on the other side. Okay, they're talking about the sewer study. They don't know about the sewer study yet. But if it's in dispute at all, that property on the other side will eventually, he will want to go to SF10, SF10, maybe even want to go a step further to SF5. Then he's going to be on to the same sewer system. Now, if this guy doesn't have to upgrade his, that's going, Jim Weber should be up but should hear to say whether or not, he's the sewer, head of the sewer part of it. He should say, if you're going to say that that guy's going to have to upgrade the sewer, because now it's already right at the point of overloading, and he's going to get it, it's going to overload it. Now what's going to happen? The kind of commission is going to be in a place to where, you know, we can't make him pay for it, we didn't make that guy pay for it. We can't make him pay for it. Now, he's going to be really upset. So just the thing, the best thing to do is just leave things the way it is. It's been that way for 50 years. That's what the people want. It was back in 95, 97, one person wanted to rezone one, one lot, and the commission then said, they didn't approve it. They said, what are we going to do? Force everybody out into the country further? The people want it that way. And what, anybody moving, want to buy property out there? It's going to lower my property, because who's going to want to buy a house out there that's got rentals behind it? Nobody's going to want to do that. And see, these people, they don't live, that own this, don't live there. They're going to, they wouldn't want it behind their house. You probably wouldn't, wouldn't want it behind your price, your house either. And it should stay the same way it is. There was a comment that, something about buildings and everything out, being out there that makes it that way. And I, I don't see any bearing. And it was brought up that there are some lots out there on half acre. Well, I only know of one, and it was that way long years ago. And if there's some out there, I don't know how they got there, because there was never a letter. But like I say, I'd like to know why. And here's the, the copy that I have here that says that this was only sent out to us. So that's one of the reasons why we can't, we didn't, didn't get the protest petitions. So I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cant. Thank you, Mr. Kent. I appreciate you getting all this information to us. Is there any questions, Mr. Kent? Mr. Kent? Mr. Kent? Can you wait just a second? You have a question from one of the commissioners?
Excuse me, sir. I do have a question on a couple of the comments that you made today.
Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Dennis, right here, has got a question for you.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for being here. I appreciate it. You made two comments, one of them I'm going to ask you and one of them I'm going to ask Scott. But you made a comment that if we rezone this automatically across the street, we'll be rezoned. I don't understand that because we're only looking at one piece of property today.
Well, it just seems illogical to me that if you, they're identical properties. There are ones on one side of Ellison, ones on the other side. If you okay this one and that guy, if he's going, I mean, he's going to want his rezoned the same way and I don't know how you could be, how could you deny him that? You know, I'm not saying he's going to do it, but, but he doesn't live there. So I know he's going to want to do something other than probably just build a, build regular homes there.
Okay.
It's something that's, you've got to look in the future about things, you know. What, you know, don't think it, just don't look at it as just this property. There's a vacant property over there. Why is it vacant? This guy's sitting on it. He bought it about 10 years ago. I wanted to buy it, but I tried to buy it, but they sold it before I even had an opportunity. I wanted to buy it, just put, just to keep it the way it was. But he's, he bought it and he's going and I've talked to him at my, got sales about a year, a year and a half ago. And he says he's getting ready to do something and he said, what? And I said, well, I haven't known about that, but whether he's going to, but, but see, these, one on this side is all going to be rentals.
Okay. That's fine. I appreciate your answer.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that you understand that this is a quasi judicial process and we only are looking at one piece of property today. And that's the laws that we're abiding by. We are not looking at a piece of property across the street and it has no bearing on this case. Thank you, sir.
But I think things should be, decisions should be made in the future. I mean, you don't go out to the, to an automobile and say, I want that car, give it to me. You look, you check cars out.
I understand, sir. I do have, I do have a question for Scott, though. One of the comments that the speaker brought up were the protests, and again, that's driven by regulations. And you have certain boundaries that you submit the protest or the letters to telling them about their zoning. Did that letter go out to everyone that is in the protest area?
That is correct. And it did. And that is out, that is out a thousand feet from the property lines.
Okay. And it went out on time?
Yes, that's correct. And in addition, there's a follow-up letter that we send to people who participate in the MAPC meeting and are, express interest in the case. So that goes out after the MAPC meeting.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions. Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Commissioner Howell? Let me make sure that Commissioner Cruz or Commissioner Lopez have any questions yet? Or none? I don't see any. Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to ask the same question that Commissioner Dennis asked. I'm going to withhold my other questions at this time. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Anybody else from the public here to speak, to address the commission? Please step forward. You probably heard what we said, but it's worth repeating. Please make sure you speak into the microphone and you'll have five minutes to address the commission. Name and address, please, and then we'll start. Thank you, sir.
Kirk Miller, Kate Miller, Engineering, 117 East Lewis. I'm the agent on the property. This property, when it was originally platted, was a lot of five-acre lot. So it's already gone through one replating, not this current property, but the adjacent properties that have been taken down to half-acre lots. They've already been replatted at one point. So this neighborhood has been evolving since the original plat. There are a few lots out there right now that are less than the half acre. I think I counted about eight of them in this neighborhood. So it's, this isn't something brand new to the neighborhood. I'm not sure how those got through because they're still in the SF-20 zoning. But we will be responsible for the paving and any improvements that need to be done to the water and the sewer. And none of that will be on the neighbors. We've run a drainage plan through the county's drainage people and they've approved our drainage plan for it. We are looking at 13 lots. And I would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Miller, for addressing us because there has been questions about drainage and that is typical that when you plat, that you have to have the sewer and water and drainage.
Right.
Slope and all those things done.
Right.
So it's not anything unique to this property. It's part of the process. Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just curious, are these 13 lots going to be equally sized?
Yeah. I think the ones on the ends are a little bit wider, but the, all the interior, the middle 11 are the same size, yes.
Okay. And again, the zoning require, the zoning change, I hate to point out the obvious things here, but if we did not approve this, you could still put in nine lots and probably nine single-family homes. If you, you have a, you may not want to speak to it, but I'm just curious. We're talking going from nine to 13. Is that a fair understanding on my part that that's what this really is?
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
Somewhere around there.
And if you did the nine homes, I'm just curious, would you, would there be any requirements? This might be a question for Scott. Would there be requirements for the sewer study or the water study or the fire hydrants or the street improvements?
Sorry, sir. Could you repeat that?
Yeah. Again, it sounds to me like by right, since it's already SF-20, he could replat this to be nine, nine lots if he wanted to. And in that case, it would probably not be a requirement necessarily for the paving, the paving or the fire hydrants or the water study or the sewer study. Those things would not necessarily be required for a replat.
Well, actually, I think that they would. I think the county would ask for that dedication of the right-of-way if this was to come up for a replat. So now, the zoning is in place, as you've identified, for residential use. That's correct. If they chose to plat it into a different configuration than what it's currently at, then that would be the opportunity for the county to request and acquire that dedication, which I believe would likely happen.
This gentleman just made a comment a minute ago, which I, or I think he made the comment. There's a number of lots around this that have, that have homes on them that are, that are less than 20,000 square feet, even though they're still zoned SF-20. They don't really meet the minimum requirement of SF-20 lot size. That may have happened, similar to what we talked about. The last property case came before us had similar problem. Do we have any, any analysis on that? How many homes are within this thousand square feet that are less than 20,000 square feet, yet they're still zoned SF-20 and have residences or homes built on those properties?
No, we do, we do not have an analysis like that to date.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Looks like Commissioner Cruz has a question. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Scott, would you mind answering, is the road that, is the road in question, is there room for it to be made into two lane?
Well, I believe that that would be the standard, is to do that. And that's what requires, because the width is insufficient, that's what requires them to provide a dedication or dedicate a portion, give over a portion of the private property to allow for the county to make that road wider.
So would that cut into the size of the lots?
It does. It does. And the numbers in terms of the 13 lots and also the description of the varying widths, that is accounting for that dedication of property.
And so to the applicant, what are your plans? Are you, are you planning to build? Are you planning to move modular homes? Like what, what are your plans?
The plan is for onsite, single-family housing, built onsite.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Lopez?
Hello. Thank you. So I have, it seems like the sewer piece would be such a big part of this to see if it's really feasible or not. Is there any way that we could see what a sewer study would look like before we make this decision?
The, this is really at the upstream end of the sewer system. I have looked at it that far and there's, it goes across the street to the south and that's the end of the system. So there's not a whole lot of sewage that's going through the pipe at this time. And we're not adding much to it, but we will go through the process of a study. We haven't done one yet, but we will go through that process. But the study's going to make a difference whether you have 13 lots or however many lots you have, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any kind of sewer, water, road, all that has to do with plating, correct? Not with zoning.
Right.
Today, the purpose of this meeting is to talk about zoning. And if they get the zoning that they're asking for, then you have to go through the next steps and figure out exactly what kind of water drainage, streets, sewers, all that. That's all part of plating. I just want to verify that.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Miller, I don't see any other questions for you. Thanks for being available and for your information.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any other person wanting to address the commission from the public comment? I don't see any, so we will, we will close the public comment and bring the discussion back to the, to the bench. So with that, let's see, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've heard the case. I've served on the Metropolitan Planning Commission for nine years. I'm very familiar with this process. I move that we approve the zone change and follow MAPC recommendations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you for that motion. I will second that motion. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am, I'm just curious, is there anything in this that limits the number of lots that this can be split up into? I know that his intention is 13, but I'm just curious, is there anything in this that limits that? That could be something, something they would change later on, is my, is my question.
Sure, sure. Well, the limitation is with the zoning in that the zoning SF-10,000 square feet.
Does that count the easements and setbacks and that type of thing? In other words, there's 187,000 square feet, so if you just divide it by 10, that'd be 18 lots.
So it does take up to the property lines, so for the parcel itself, so that would include the easements. But what gets subtracted out of that is obviously the dedication for the roadway that's been proposed and requested as part of the plat.
So the remaining property that is outside the roadway would have to be, would have to be 10,000 square feet still?
Yeah. Each, each property would have to be 10,000 square feet minus what's been dedicated for the roadway. That's right.
Okay. Well, I tell you what, I just want to say, I appreciate the passion of the, of the people involved in this. I know this is very emotional for many people. And Mr. Kent, I have, I've not met you personally and I appreciate you taking time to come up here today. Thank you for your testimony. And I know there's concerns about property values. As I spoke to people on the phone, I encourage them to be very objective, bring objective arguments. Talk about, if you're going to bring up that argument, do their best to talk about a similar property that, you know, look at property values at someplace else that may be similar to this, would be very compelling, but no one has provided that, no one has provided that evidence. I understand people don't want change. I know it's, it's hard to see change, but I also know that people have a right to use their property. And I, I'm a champion for property rights, but that's always a two-way street. And I know that people, you know, have a right to use their property. Whoever owns this property has a, has a right to develop it. They don't have to live there and they don't have to actually, you know, sell it to individual owners. They're allowed to have rentals. I think that's something we can't get involved in. Rental properties is a huge part of this community and people have a reason to, to rent. It doesn't really say they won't take care of their property and that's not something that I think we can latch on to. The most compelling argument this morning deals with the notification, I think, whether people were notified. And again, with Scott, with your testimony, you're telling us that they were notified. I know that that's been probably one of the biggest contentions is whether or not people, whether or not people knew about this. But I would, I guess I might even ask your, your, your words on, this actually goes back to, I think even before Christmas. This is a fairly long, long case. Notice it's a 2020 case and we're, we're already halfway through February. This was initially proposed as, as a multifamily, multifamily housing and I think that was denied by MAPC. And that would have been many, many more homes at that time. I guess at the end of the day, you know, looking at the golden factors, I don't, I don't see there's a lot of, a lot of arguments to oppose this at this point. I think that the applicant could do nine homes if he wanted to anyway. So really what I see is he's planning to do 13. So we're talking about four additional homes. And I do think that this road that's in front of these properties, these, the road that's in front of these, these subject properties is not in very good condition right now. The fact that there will be considerations made for sewage and water and public safety in terms of like fire hydrants, that to me is comforting. And those are requirements for this to go forward. So I am compelled to say, I think this is a reasonable, a reasonable proposal and I think I'm going to support it. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I don't see any, so there's been a motion and a second to approve as presented. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for being here on that one. Madam Clerk, please, next item, please.
Item J, update on the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act and COVID-19 spending.
Good morning, Ms. Lindsay. Welcome to the commission meeting.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay? Am I speaking loudly enough, Commissioners Cruz and Lopez? Okay. Very good. So it has been almost two months since I have been before you to give a COVID spending status update. And so I'll run through just where we stand today with spending. We'll talk about cares, we'll talk about the county's general fund, we'll talk about the 2021 plan for COVID spending. And then we'll talk a little bit at the end about what we know about round two spending or round two funding. So at the conclusion of this, it will just be a single vote for receive and file. Hopefully, there are no action items for you to take on this today. So we will jump into the spending information then. So as of yesterday, the county has spent since last March, $97,401,627. The very first expenditure we had was 11 months ago today. So that is some amazing financial information when you stop and think about how much activity has occurred in roughly 330 days. The last time we spoke, we were actually at $64.9 million. So this is still, in two months, a pretty astronomical number. So in terms of non-cares COVID spending, we are now between 2020 and 2021 at $5,338,375 in the county's general fund. Now, when we spoke last time, we were at about $1.36 million. So this increase of just less than $4 million is almost all based on 2021 spending. And again, that was intentional. Uh, when we get to cares, we'll talk about some of the personnel reimbursement that we were able to do for public health and public safety. We were able to put that in, uh, at least a significant portion to the county general fund. And so that made it so that the county had much greater flexibility with its spending rather than having to follow all the cares, uh, requirements. So, um, while it's a large number, that 4 million dollar increase, uh, this is actually, uh, something that helps us, we think, in the long run. Now of that, 2.2 million is just on temporary staffing. And so not all of that has actually been paid out. Those are just contracts that are in place based on anticipated spending. We do expect that number to get larger, just based on the sheer consumption of hours and the needs you've heard from the Health Department in the last few days. We also have spent 700,000 dollars on cleaning services. And so those also are cards that have been put into play, shopping cards where we basically set aside funding, and that is just for us to get through the first six months of 2021. And of course, as we get closer to the end of June and we see how, um, activities are going with vaccinations, um, with COVID case rates, those costs may be what we expect to spend. Uh, but we can also very well see that going past, uh, June at this point. We also have spent about 100,000 dollars on marketing and advertising, so continuing to get that message out about safe practices. Another 100,000 dollars also, as, uh, bills start to come in for that work, to do the first floor traffic remodel uh, here in this building. Within the Fire General Fund, we were at, uh, basically no change since, uh, the beginning of 2020. We're still at just under 42,000 dollars total in the Fire General Fund. A good portion of that, though, is because cares was able to pick up some of those expenses last year. And then, of course, we were at 58,000 dollars in the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Fund uh, that we received early on in the pandemic from, actually, the second round of relief, cares was the third. Um, and so, uh, that has not changed. Now we'll shift gears and talk about cares itself. So first, we'll talk about the cares allocation that came directly to Sedgwick County. If you recall, that was just at 99.6 million, plus we were able to earn some investment income even with those very low interest rates uh, that you all authorized back on December 16th in your spending plan for us to spend. So in terms of the county response and needs, we are at 57 million 345,226 dollars. Of that, about 18 million dollars was able to be used for personnel reimbursement. A good chunk of that was able to go to the comcare, uh, revenue fund. And so that has positioned comcare to be able to continue to offer its services even when there has been such a steep decline in charge for service revenues. And because I know it's of interest to the commission, um, the Family First Coronavirus Relief Act Paid Leave ended as of December 31st. Uh, there were still some filings that got, uh, posted after that date, just because paperwork was being submitted as people were coming back to work. And so in terms of actual cost, uh, it was funded with cares, that's at 921,112 dollars. Those otherwise would have been costs that either wouldn't have been able to be paid. Maybe those, uh, employees would have been in a, uh, work without pay situation, or it would have been borne by the county's operating budget. So then let's shift to, uh, what I think we're almost interested in, and that is cares funding to external entities. And so to date, we have spent 26 million 78,000 dollars even in support to schools, cities, safe operating grant entities, and stimulus review team entities, just from the county's bucket. We also, of course, had the state spark funding, and we'll move down to that here in a moment. So of course, all schools received their funding early in the process of 5 million dollars. Cities now have received 14 million 617,487 dollars of their 15 million dollar allocation. We're working very hard, recognizing that round two funding is coming. We are working very hard to get through all of the reporting and information uh, that cities and all of these entities have submitted so that we can make these final payments to them. Now, on the public health and social service providers, you may recall that about 13.4 million dollars of awards were approved by the commission. To date, only about 5.1 million of that has been paid out. Um, as you might recall, especially when we were talking about WSU, cares requires significant documentation, proof of payment, checks, all of those things. And so we are working with more than 80 entities to try and get that documentation, uh, so that we can meet those federal standards. So, uh, again, we are working hard. We want to try and close that out at the end of the month if possible. Uh, with safe operating grants, you already saw the video, um, at your commission meeting last January where we described that about 1,300 businesses have received grants. Of that, we did use about 5 million dollars from the state spark funding, but that meant that the county then offered up 1.4 million roughly, uh, for this program. And so those have been paid out. Now, we are still continuing, uh, compliance monitoring. If you recall, those were eligibility grants. All you had to do was prove that you met certain criteria, and if you did, you were awarded funds. Now we are going through the compliance process. So we have randomly selected 10% of all entities to be audited, basically. They have to provide documentation, they use those expenses, uh, in ways that were eligible under cares. Then we will go to round two. And round two is essentially, we look at everyone, and there are a number of fraud indicators um, that our consultants have helped us to identify, and we have a process in place whereby all of that information is going to be combed through. We're going to use actually our forensic, um, contract that we have with B K D to help us go through that. And then if we do find that there is fraud, not only will we need to claw back, but there actually may be an expectation that we then have to turn that over to the Office of the Inspector General and potentially even law enforcement. So, uh, certainly we'll have more discussion about that, um, as we proceed. So with cares, we started with 99 million 636,917 dollars. Between those two, uh, funding groups we just talked about, we have spent 83 million 423,226 dollars. So that leaves us with 16.2 million that we are earnestly trying to push out the door between now and the end of the month in preparation for round two funding to come through. So then moving to state spark funding, we were awarded just under 9.3 million. Of that, 5 million dollars was set aside for safe operating grants. All of that has been spent. You had allocated just under 3 million dollars for P P E kits for businesses and nonprofits. That produced 10,000 kits, and nearly all of those are out. I understood that maybe about, as of about a week ago, we had 30, um, that were sitting, and we actually had businesses and nonprofits that wanted to accept those. And so we spent 2.96 million on that. The remainder of that, 9.3 million that we received, was set aside for workforce development. If you recall, there were three proposals that came forward, Friends University, uh, WSU Tech, um, and also, um, Workforce Alliance. All of those have been working diligently with us and also with our consultants to provide the necessary documentation. Uh, because that is funded with spark money, uh, we must have those payments made by 2/28. Um, so we are working diligently, uh, making that about the highest priority to get those dollars out the door um, and then get those distributed to businesses. So, um, that is the spending update. I can pause if there are any questions. Otherwise, I'll quickly move to the plan for 21 and what we know about round two.
Okay, Lindsay, thanks. I don't see any questions at this time, so let's see what 21 has in store.
Okay, so at this time, we are estimating roughly 16 million dollars in COVID expenses. That includes everything that we talked about before in terms of cleaning services, temporary employment. It includes temporary positions. It includes a very small amount that has been estimated to cover any portion of the, uh, employee paid leave that the commissioners approved back in December. It also includes expenses for courts, for the sheriff, and for others associated with continuing to maintain social distancing and safe practices in their facilities. So, um, I have quite the list of details if commissioners have any interest in seeing that. Um, but at this point, that's what we estimate spending out of the county's general fund. Just a reminder, at the end of 2020, when Brent gave you his quarterly financial report, we actually had a surplus of 24.5 million dollars in the county general fund at the end of 2020. And so we are well-positioned to handle this estimated expense through June and potentially longer if necessary, um, assuming we're not ready to open the doors and return to normal July 1st. Um, but we also know that we may be getting additional funding. Uh, what we have heard is that based on estimates on the American Recovery Plan, Sedgwick County would receive 101 million dollars under that plan. The city of Wichita also would receive a significant chunk of funding. And then at this point, townships actually are estimated to get some funding. And so, uh, we should know roughly by mid-March what that funding will look like. We have been told two things, I think, that are worth noting. Um, one is that that funding will last through December 31st, 2022. So we actually will have roughly 21 months to spend about the same amount of money that we had to spend in eight months, or at least allocate. The second thing worth noting is that apparently cares was easy, which is news to me. Um, but this will come with the full gamut of federal rules. And so that includes everything from the needs assessment that we already did last time, all the way through all of the same procurement standards where we have to do formal RFPs and RFBs for services. Um, we won't be able to have something as ad hoc as the stimulus review team, uh, that you had last time. So what you should know about that is we already have a strategy session set with Whit O'Brien's this afternoon because we want to understand from them what this process needs to look like. The good news is that because we have so much time and because we are in a position to handle this financially in the general fund, we can be methodical about how this is approached. So not only will we do a needs assessment, a community-wide needs assessment, we'll also try and do a targeted needs assessment so that we can get to those areas of the community um, that we think probably have the greatest need. And I say that because we've already asked Jeremy Hill with, uh, C E D B R to help us understand from the data, are there parts of the community that are hurting that maybe we don't see or hear from? So that we can be strategic. We also, uh, want to talk with commissioners, too, with so many entities receiving funding. There may be some opportunities for collaboration that can help us reduce administrative burden and efficiencies um, and maybe do some shared partnerships. So these are all things that we'll talk about with Whit today, or start to talk about with Whit today. Uh, and then we will come back with a plan and a proposal as we get closer and as we truly start to understand what round two looks like. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, and I see Commissioner Cruz has her hand raised as well.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Um, I, I have a couple of questions. Um, so you mentioned that both counties, cities, townships, um, could receive additional stimulus payments. Um, we do know that there, um, was some allocation towards, um, with the Save Our Stages, um, for that, that group. And, um, so I wonder, what, are there any other parts of our community that might receive direct allocations that you're aware of right now?
I don't know that they will receive just a lump sum payment like we have, but I do know that there is a lot of business funding. Um, there is renewed payroll, um, paycheck protection program funding, there is renewed, uh, S B O A loans. Um, and so this is a 1.9 trillion dollar package, and so I have to believe that there will be programs that come to our community. Um, but I don't know, I, I don't know how those will be administered yet, but I'll definitely keep you in the loop as I hear more.
Okay, and then like the state, what will the state receive? Surely they'll get something as well?
Oh, yes, they will. Um, so my understanding on this one is that entities with populations of 200,000 or more are receiving significant funding chunks, um, which is why the concept of townships receiving funding, uh, is somewhat unique because they certainly don't have 200,000 residents. So we are still waiting to understand how that's going to work, um, if those townships maybe would get the direct funding or if that's a pass-through to the state, if we get that and we have to administer it. So there's going to be a lot of moving parts to this.
Okay, I know that you're very excited.
I am thrilled.
Um, I just have one final question. Um, the safe operating grants and the auditing that's going on now. Um, I did receive, um, some communication from someone who has, is being audited. And I just wonder, you said it was 10% of all of them? And then how, how were those selected?
Uh, I mean, literally, I go through, uh, payments on a weekly basis. We generate those out of the grant portal system that we're using. Um, I have a, a methodology that was approved by D R S and B K D, and we assign a random number to anyone who has received funding in that block of time. And the 10% who have the lowest score get selected. And so then we communicate those to D R S, which is our auditing firm, uh, and then they go out and actually perform the audit.
Okay, and so this particular individual was received notice, um, a very urgent notice on the 12th and had till the 17th, I believe, to receive, you know, to get that information back. If they don't get that information back, or they're trying to communicate with you about how to get the information requested to you, is that the drop-dead date for them to communicate what you're asking for?
No, as long as they are communicating with us, we are, we are being flexible and giving everyone extra time as long as they're actually responsive. It's when we're not getting responses that we start, um, getting a little more aggressive about trying to get that information back.
Okay, and because this is a little bit more, um, and I know that you guys worked many, many hours. Um, I know that you're probably, as with all of our staff, working nights and weekends as well. Um, are you considering maybe, like, like we're hiring a consultant firm with Whit O'Brien. Um, are you, are you looking into hiring someone else or some additional staff to take this on as their permanent position? Because the last thing we want to do is lose, you know, Hope or Brent or you, uh, because the workload is so intense. So I, is that something you're considering?
I, I think it, uh, first of all, let me say thank you for acknowledging that on behalf of staff. Our team has worked very hard, and they're awesome. Um, we have three contracts right now with consultants. One is D R S. They're actually performing that auditing function that you're talking about. We have Whit O'Brien's who's helping us with the eligibility, uh, process, and then of course, we have B K D, um, who serves as our auditor, but in this function actually serves as teachers for us to understand the grant process. So we would have every hope that the commissioners would allow us to continue with that support. We have bolstered that over time. We actually have four full-time staff at D R S that are dedicated just to us right now. Um, and so as this rolls out, as we start to see what programs will look like, um, as we start to see if there are opportunities to share the load with others, yes, I think we're absolutely looking to add resources, but we want to do that strategically. Um, and, and there will be restrictions under the federal rules about how much we can actually spend on administration, so we're going to have to be really smart about it. But yes, absolutely, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, and I very well may take you up on that, uh, opportunity down the road.
Well, I don't know what my, my fellow commissioners will, will agree to, but I'm sure that they, I can't even see them. All I can see is Sarah, so, um, but I, I really can't thank you guys enough for the dedication and how, how many hours you worked this past year. Um, there were many times where I saw your big cup of Starbucks or your Red Bull. Um, I know that we all kind of lived on that and still living on it. Um, so really, please tell your team, Lindsay, and please make sure to get a day off because I know that there's a lot of work to do, but make sure you're taking care of yourself as well.
Don't you worry. Next Monday, you're not going to hear a peep out of me.
Okay. Any other questions? I don't see any, Lindsay. Thanks again for the report. Uh, make a motion to receive and file. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Lindsay, thanks again. Uh, we echo, we all feel strongly of gratitude and thanks for you and your staff, so appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item K, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on February 11th, 2021.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. Uh, the meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on February 11th originally results in, resulted in five items, but there is one item we will be deferring today. Our first item is the Bridge Improvements, two bridges, and, um, identified as B 492 and B 501. This, uh, recommendation is to accept the low bid from Mies Construction, and that's in the amount of 597,338 dollars and 25 cents. Item number two is the On-Call Data Drop Cable Installation for Various Departments. The recommendation is to accept the overall low bids from two vendors, and that's Miltel Incorporated and Vision Communications Kansas Incorporated. And this is for a period, excuse me, of two years with three one-year options to renew. Item number three is the item that we will be deferring and bringing back to you at a future date. Item number four, the On-Based Maintenance and Support is Division of Information and Technology. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Conica Minolta Business Solutions USA Incorporated, and that's in the amount of 208,031 dollars and 2 cents. It's good through March 31st, 2022. And our final item is the Project Docs Electronic Plan Review Maintenance and Support, and that's for the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from AVAL Software Corp. in the amount of 147,265 dollars and 45 cents, and this is good through April 24th of 2026. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I do recommend approval of the four items.
Okay, any questions for Joe? I don't see any, Joe, so I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, Board of Bids with the exception of item three?
Three, yes, sir.
And with the exception of item three. That's the motion?
Second.
Been a motion and a second to accept the Board of Bids with the exception of item three. Um, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate the work. Uh, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office. Recommend approval of consent items L through V. V as in Victor this morning. V as in Victor, this morning.
Okay. There's a, I'll make a motion to accept Consent Items L through V as in Victor.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay. Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Hello, Akeem.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Akeem Ashford, Communications Director. I have, let's see here. Hey, Akeem, can you help me out here? All right, Commissioners, so just kind of helping me stay focused here on what I'm doing in presenting to you each Wednesday, going to provide just kind of a list. Now, these aren't all of the bills that our Contract Lab is Jason Watkins and his staff are tracking, but it does comprise the ones that we most recently talked about, and I've got a list of others if you all have questions. So starting off, we've got a number of bills here. I know Commissioner Howell presented testimony, both written and verbal, on Senate Bill 130, excuse me. So we worked with him as well as Justin Wagner on that one. At this point, my understanding is that the Secretary of State's office will comprise all of those testimonies and from that hearing, and then provide a summary of action. I'm not sure if Commissioner Howell has any additional comments on that at this point or not.
Yes, thank you, Akeem, for that introduction. I did testify, the Rules and Regulations hearing was yesterday. When I was on that hearing, apparently I was the only one that submitted testimony to them, and I'm the only one that spoke, and maybe somebody came in after me, but as far as I could tell, there was not a lot of interest in the state issuing any opinion on the Rules and Regulations. But I did present the idea that since, we testified on this bill two years ago, that something actually has changed, and that is we have ballot printers available to us now. We don't have enough of them, but it is a game changer in terms of how we can accommodate every voter at every poll site. Again, I would suggest we still have voters assigned to a poll site, and we would expect them to go to their assigned poll site on Election Day. I wouldn't encourage them to do anything else. But for those voters that end up outside of their assigned poll site, how would we accommodate them somewhere else? Currently, we would use a provisional ballot system. We would actually pull a ballot out of a box that is actually not the correct ballot for that voter, and they would be partially disenfranchised if they would submit that ballot through provisional, as a provisional ballot. And they have to manually processed because they're partially counted. I find that to be the genesis of this bill. We were trying to avoid that, which is why we came up with Senate Bill 130. But two years ago, we talked about trying to encourage, I should say, we talked about our electronic voting machines can handle 1,000 ballot styles, can be programmed into them at one time, so they can handle the entire county regardless of where they're located, they can bring up the correct ballot for that voter. And that was the reason that we thought this would be a good way to solve that problem. Since then, the Secretary of State has actually identified a number of concerns regarding the electronic poll books, the interconnectivity of those poll books, potential hacking of that database, the vulnerabilities that might exist in that system. And so I believe maybe a better way to go forward would be for us to embrace the idea of using ballot printers, where we would provide the correct ballot for that voter and have them follow the existing process of using the provisional submission. To me, that solves the problem. We don't have to disenfranchise any voter if they end up in the wrong poll site. And that's what I presented to the Secretary of State yesterday. They had not heard this idea before, and I find that very troubling because, I guess I've talked about this for a little while at least, and I thought they would have at least had the idea, but no one presented that idea before me yesterday. And so they're looking at it, and they're wondering whether the legislation would allow for that, and I think it does, because the legislation we passed a couple of years ago doesn't say the method of voting. Even though we advocated for electronic machines, it actually doesn't say that that's the method of voting required by the county, which would indicate that we should allow them to do paper ballots or electronic, and I don't think that's the intent of the testimony we offered two years ago. Anyway, I guess my point is this, that I think the printed ballot at those poll sites on Election Day is a way to get there, and it's much easier, it's a lot safer, and I don't think it, I can't think of any reason why we would not embrace that right now going forward, and I would like that to be the county's position. I believe in this so much so that I think I'd like to submit this testimony, I'd like to massage it a little bit, but I'd like to submit this as an op-ed to the Wichita Eagle. I'd like my colleagues to consider that, and if they want to be a part of that, let me know. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. As everyone knows, I've been a very strong supporter of the Vote Anywhere process ever since we started pushing through Senate Bill 130, so much so that if you recall back when I had COVID, I talked directly with Secretary of State Schwab, and when I was talking to him, he told us that, hey, if you submit your plan here in February, because the plan has to be submitted six months before the next election, the primary election in August, that he'd go ahead and approve that. And when we were on the phone, he was convinced that our election commissioner was already developing a plan because she was actually on the commission that came up with all the rules and regulations. Since that phone call, and I have not gotten back with Secretary Schwab, although I think probably the time for six months is now past, I learned that there is no plan here in Sedgwick County, which kind of distresses me to some extent, that our election commissioner wasn't moving forward with a plan. The second thing that I learned, and probably even more important, was when our election commissioner came over and briefed us on the past election, everything was just perfect. Everything worked great, no problems whatsoever. And now suddenly, a week ago, I find out that we had a 90-minute period when we were down and only could provide provisional ballots. That's brand-new information to me. As a result of that, we may not be able to do, because I don't know what the problem was, because I've never been briefed on it, all I heard was that there's a problem. So even if there is some kind of problem that's going to cause downtime where we can't continue this, we need to solve that problem first before we go into Vote Anywhere. The election process is the most critical thing that we can support to make sure that it is fair, honest, that every person's vote counts 100%. So at this time, even though that I am a strong supporter of being able to allow people to vote anywhere, first of all, I think that because we didn't have a plan, I think it's probably too late to get a plan in six months before the next primary election in August. And second of all, if there is a significant problem out there that we're not aware of, I don't know that I'm ready to proceed forward. So those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. As a follow-up comment to myself, and considering Commissioner Dennis's comments, I'm not sure there's anything in the law that right now wouldn't allow for us to provide a printed ballot to any voter on Election Day if they're outside their assigned poll site. The current process is the poll worker goes to the box of ballots that are pre-staged there, the pre-printed ballots, and they are for the precincts for that poll site. For example, a poll site might have six to eight, maybe 10, different precincts that would potentially vote at that poll site, and so that poll worker will go to that ballot box and pull out one of the paper ballots out of that box that they say, well, this isn't exactly the right ballot for you, but it's one that's got most of the stuff that you might be interested in, would you want to vote on this one? And the voter would say, sure, and they'll say, fine, go ahead and fill this out. Understand, however, that on those down-ballot races that don't apply to your assigned, to your exact precinct, they may not count. So it's understood going into this, they have the choice of going to their correct poll site or filling out the incorrect ballot in the unassigned poll site. I'm just curious if there's anything in the law that would prohibit us right now from printing the correct ballot for that voter in that instance. I can't find it, and I think actually we have a solution actually available to us right now. If we simply had the ballot printers available at the, again, I may be wrong with my number here, but they say 86 or 88 poll sites that we used last year, and we're going to add a few more, I hope. But if we had that number of ballot printers, we have that, I think, available to us right now potentially. I think we do, and I think that if that's the solution that's available right now, we don't even need Senate Bill 130. I think there's a chance we might be able to provide that exact correct ballot to that voter in that rare instance that they're in the wrong place on Election Day. We can give them the correct ballot, have them follow the existing process. I need someone from legal, I guess, to work with the election office and find out whether or not there's a prohibition from printing the correct ballot for that voter in that instance. I don't know that there is a problem, so thank you again.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the information. I know we're going to get an election commission, a new commissioner hired in probably June or July, and so be a lot of pressure on that new commissioner to alter, but that's just my thoughts. So, okay, let's move on.
Just a couple more. Chairman, House Bill 2142 does have a sister bill, Senate Bill 149. The sponsor of this bill is the Committee on Taxation. This is the Act Concerning Property Taxation relating to the reimbursement to certain property owners of property taxes resulting from a forced shutdown or capacity limitation by a county. So this is something that actually came up the last couple of weeks that is being worked in both sides. The status of this, there was actually a hearing yesterday, or excuse me, on February 9th. Let's see. And then the Senate referred this to Committee on Assessment and Taxation on the 5th. So working with Jason to kind of understand where this now goes. I did listen in to KAC, who had a hearing on this. We did provide some testimony. I know that, Chairman, you did also go up and provide some testimony in person up in Topeka as well. Moving on to House Bill 2334. This is an act concerning elections. I thought this was an important one. This is relating to electronic voting machines prohibiting network connections to such machines, and we also provided some testimony on this one as well. This one is referred to the Committee on Elections. That was done on the 11th of this month. Senate Bill 13, there's a good update on this one. That one is actually going to be heard on the House floor today. The House actually went into session at 11:00 this morning, and so Senate, excuse me, Senate Bill 13, let's see, this one is the Act Concerning Property Taxation relating to tax levy. So we've talked about this extensively over the last couple of weeks, so that will be on the House floor today. Senate Bill 52, this one is the Act Establishing Sedgwick County Urban Area Nuisance Abatement Act. This one was on the floor, this one will be on the floor, excuse me, today. The Senate will go on the floor at 2:00, 2:30, excuse me, this afternoon. So I'll be following those two very closely today. And then last, excuse me, let's see, going to the next one, Senate Bill 53. This is our bill establishing the Charter Commission, or excuse me, changing the Charter Commission to use members on our own Charter Commission. This one has been referred to Committee on Local Government as well, so following that one with Jason very closely. Senate Bill 181 is a newer bill. This one is, would create the Elevator Safety Act relating to safety standards for elevators, licensure requirements for elevator inspection, installation, and repair. So this bill has a hearing, House Taxation, tomorrow at 10:30 in Room 44S, I-44S. So going to work with Jason on that one after the hearing tomorrow. And then Senate Bill 202, this one had 13 cosponsors. This one is the, an act concerning taxation relating to income and property tax. This one really has to do with Small Businesses and Owner Relief Act, Enacting the Unemployment Insurance, Fraud Protection Act Exempting Unemployment Compensation Income, and several other key factors related to small businesses. This bill has been referred to the Committee on Assessment and Taxation. That was done on the 11th of this month. With that, I'm not sure if Mike Papoun has any questions or any input, but I'll stand for questions that you may have with me.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions? And I did testify up there on the House bill regarding repayment of revenue from the County Commission General Fund, and I think it was, I think the committee was really updated and informed with a lot of comments, and I think that bill in its current format probably isn't going anywhere, but I don't know for sure. But there might be something going forward on that, what's going to be in the future for the next pandemic or the next problem. So that's my feedback, but that's, you know, we'll see what they say in the committee. Mr. Papoun?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could just supplement some of the matters that Akeem has brought up, and I like.
Mike, can you talk into the microphone, please?
Yeah. If I just supplement a little bit of some of the items that Akeem brought up, our two primary pieces of legislation, as Akeem said, Charter Commission has been through the Senate, all the way past through the Senate, and is in now House Local Government. We don't know if we're going to get a hearing before turnaround on that or not. It will depend on the work of the committee, but that's moving along nicely. And as Akeem said, our Nuisance Abatement Bill will be on the floor of the Senate this afternoon, so it'll be interesting to see how that turns out. The elevator bill that he talked about, we actually submitted testimony on behalf of Chris Labrum on that. That's a bill that would have the state basically take over elevator inspection, which is right now being done by MABCD. So we oppose the legislation in its current form, and Chris Labrum will be appearing by WebEx tomorrow morning at that hearing. I might also mention Commissioner Cruz asked me Friday about House Bill 2160. This is a bill that I know Joan Tammany, our Comcare Executive Director, has been working on and would provide much-needed payment reform for dealing with medical, mental health expenses. This bill, and Ms. Tammany actually testified for the committee on this bill, and it went out of that committee, the Health and Human Services Committee in the House unanimously. And I might say that our local legislator, Brenda Landwehr, was very instrumental in helping us with that bill, as Chair of that committee. Other than that, I don't think there's anything. Oh, he mentioned that we've talked about Senate Bill 13 extensively, but there have been some changes. The House actually made a few changes to that bill, and I don't know that we've talked about that publicly, and I don't know if Commissioner Howell will want to weigh in or not, because I know he testified on that bill. But Senate Bill 13, one of our concerns was the mailing that was going to go out and the cost of that mailing. The way that bill has been amended now would allow us, for the first year, to put information on our website and allow us to publish the information in a newspaper of general circulation. So that, but then after January 1 of 2021, or after December 31, 2021, we would then be under the requirement of sending out a postcard or some kind of direct mailing to the taxpayers in the county. So that's still problematic. And another feature of that bill is they're, unlike the Senate, they're defining a taxing subdivision as taking in more than $100,000 in revenue. So that's, that change is going to eliminate a lot of the smaller taxing subdivisions in the county, which will save the county some work, I believe. But remember, those are only suggested changes by the House Tax Committee. It'll still have to go to the floor of the House today, which it'll most likely be passed. And then after that, it'll go to Conference Committee, and we'll see if the House Conferences will be able to keep some of those provisions in that will help Sedgwick County. But that's all I have to say for now, unless you have any questions.
Okay. Thanks for those updates. I don't see any questions, so appreciate the report, and I think this is a good way to keep us updated with numbers and everything else.
Absolutely, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other?
Does anybody have any other? And noted that we're going to have an executive session at this point. I don't see anybody with other. So Commissioner Cruz, do you have the executive session in front of you, or do you want me to?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, please, Madam Clerk.
Executive Session.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 10 minutes until 11:42 for consultation regarding matters for consultation regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this, return to a live broadcast at 11:42.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, and it's my fault. We've had to revise this executive sessions on a motion on a couple of occasions, and the revised one needs to be read into the record rather than.
Well, the difference is 10 minutes or 15 minutes?
Well, it's not just 10 minutes or 15 minutes. My first one didn't have the subject of the executive session that has to be in there.
Commissioner Cruz.
Are you telling me I have the wrong executive session?
Yes, we need the revised, the one that says executive session revised. I can provide this to the chairman or any.
I can read it.
Yeah, Chairman, if you'd like to defer to another commissioner who has the correct language, that would be fine.
Okay. Well, is there anything prohibits me from reading it?
No.
Okay.
We just have a new motion. We just, that motion.
And do we feel that, would 10 minutes still suffice?
It's entirely up to this board. 10 minutes, it's fine. I think it can.
I think everybody's been briefed a little bit, but let's. Okay, I'm going to request an executive session. Board of County Commissioners be held during the meeting of today. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 10 minutes until, let's say, 11:45 for the consultation regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 11:45.
Mr. Chairman, I really apologize. I'm going to have to give you, and this is something that has to be read verbatim. And this is, this is the revised.
You have to read that language in, and it has the subject of contract negotiations.
Oh, okay, okay. So fortunately, the moves have not been seconded. So this will be the, this will be the one that will, for executive session. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 10 minutes until 11:45 for consultation regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship on the subject of contract negotiations. That's the addition. And that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 11:45. Second, and there's a second. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. We will recess. Will you stay in this room? Or how do we keep? All right, we'll stay in this room, and so you will stay on Zoom, Commissioner Cruz and Commissioner, or we'll? We're going to call you. So you can pause your Zoom, I guess. You can stay on Zoom, but we're going to call your cell phones.